This is about the future and that's about...
That is really... we did not...
Okay. Oh, easy. Not good. Easy for us. That's probably inappropriate, my way of thinking.
Seven o'clock. At this time, I will call the June 19th, 2012 Planning Board meeting to order. First item on the agenda are minutes of June 12th. Mr. Secretary.
I don't believe I received the minutes of June 12th, so I haven't reviewed them yet.
Okay.
So we have the whole...
I don't remember receiving them either, so... Melanie, the June 12th minutes?
I believe you were sent out from upstairs, but I will tell you...
Oh, maybe I missed it.
All right, now, let me...
I can resend them.
Let me disqualify that. Our secretary is out for a medical reason. And so there's a good possibility that she did not receive them and then forward them to us. So I will entertain a motion that we table the minutes of June 12th.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is an approval not required. The applicant is Kathleen Murchus to combine lots 90 and 94 into one lot located at 15 Mayflower Street in Falmouth. Is there someone here to represent the applicant? Seeing none. I'll ask Brian, are there any comments from the staff?
It's a merger of two lots on their vista, so by definition, a subdivision entitled to your endorsement approval.
Okay. Any... okay, motion?
I moved it.
I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the wind energy systems, the planning board draft for the zoning by law. Mr. Secretary, do you have a notice for... We don't have it.
You don't have... This is not the wrong...
I'm sorry?
You don't have to read the notes. It's a hearing. This is not going to warrant, there's no notice.
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
Oh, okay.
We have time.
Hmm, that's... all right. Okay. I know it was publicized in the papers and on the internet, on our website. Before we get started, I would like to remind the audience, and thank you all for coming, by the way, that this hearing is to get input from the public. And so we are interested in what you have to say in reference to the draft that we have, and there are copies up here if you haven't seen it or haven't downloaded it from home. We're interested in your input for the, this first portion of our draft bylaw. This is not the complete bylaw. This is the beginning. This is like the first, maybe one half to one-third of it. But what we would like you to do is to limit your comments on this particular portion of the bylaw. So if you need a minute to read it or haven't read it before, then I'd appreciate it if you did before you speak. When you do speak, would you please come to the podium, identify yourselves, and speak into the microphone? You are being televised, and we have also been advised that there may be someone from the public here to tape this proceeding. I believe the gentleman in the back is there?
John Carlton Foss is my name.
Okay, thank you. And so you need to be advised that you are being... Is that a sound also, Mr. Foss?
Sound also.
So, okay, you need to be advised that you are being televised by the town, FCTV, and also Mr. Foss. I would like to remind the planning board that we are here to listen. And we can ask for clarification of comments that are made by the person speaking to us, but we are not here to debate issues. And it's also necessary for you to remember that this wind energy system bylaw applies to future installation of wind turbines in which wind energy systems in Falmouth and is not relevant to the wind turbines that are currently installed in town. Lastly, I believe I can speak for the board by saying that the board's position currently is that the state's development of wind turbine regulations is a work in progress. They haven't finalized anything. The Cape Cod Commission seems to have put their position on hold and that there are many towns in the Commonwealth and several on the Cape that have gone ahead and developed their own bylaws concerning wind turbines and wind energy systems. And we are of the belief that we want to go ahead, we don't want to wait. I can remind you that we asked the town for a moratorium on the construction of new wind turbines a year and a half ago, a little over a year ago, and then asked for an extension on that moratorium this last town meeting so that the planning board would have sufficient time to develop this bylaw, to debate it, to get public input, and then present it to the fall town meeting of 2012, which would be this coming fall. So that is our goal. I believe I've covered an introduction that should lead into comments from the public. So at this time, I would invite members of the public to address the planning board with any concerns or issues or thoughts that you might have on the proposal that's available here for you or was online also. So if you would like to address us, please raise your hand and I will acknowledge and recognize you. Yes, sir.
Evening. My name is John Ford. I live at 372 Blacksmith Sharp Road. And I want to, first of all, commend you all for the amount of work you've done up to this point. And I've caught most of it on FCTV, and I'm more than impressed with the amount of work that you've done. You haven't left too many stones unturned, but I found a few pebbles that you were remiss in. There is no municipal language in the bylaw that's proposed as is. And we're all familiar with the fiasco with Wind One, and it was a question of municipal use there. And I'd like to see if that could be somewhat defined in your formulation of this bylaw.
Okay.
And also, the limit, you have the 200-kilowatt limit. And I'm wondering if you could give some more thought to that. We have, there are 100-kilowatt units that are disturbing people, even though these people are further than four times the height that the Cape Cod Commission has proposed. I would like to see no 200-kilowatt and no 100-kilowatt in residences, single residences in double-A agricultural zone. I happen to live in a residential double-A agricultural zone. And to have one of those... If it's a 200-kilowatt, it would be about 550 feet away from me or a 100-kilowatt, which would be 400 and change away from me. That terrifies me. And I think that would be very unfair to any resident of Falmouth. And I don't know of other zones that residences have that much area, so they're probably not impacted. But those of us in that zoning would be impacted. And one other point. Public outreach area. That doesn't mean setback, does it?
No, that means how far we will solicit input by notification.
For the permitting?
For the permitting, yes.
Okay. Well, then, in that case, I don't see any setback requirements for any size turbine that you have proposed.
That's correct. That will be after tonight. That will be subsequent to this portion of the bylaw.
It will.
Yes.
And will the public have a further...
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, those are my brief comments, but they mean a lot to me, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Name is John Ford. What's the name?
Ford.
The next speaker, please. Yes, sir.
Thank you for letting us have this opportunity. My name is Steve Layton. I'm in Precinct One. And I have absolutely no complaints about any of the physical restrictions that you might have thought of, such as height or sound or flicker pollution and so on. But my comment is really a question. Can someone explain to me the rationale behind why you care what is done with the power? The 51% has to be used on-site. For instance, as just a thought experiment, had someone installed in the future under these rules, a wind turbine of a certain allowable size, and it met all the requirements and none of the neighbors complained, and then some efficiency improvement came along that enabled that same turbine to put out 50% more power. How would that possibly be hurting it? You already by definition agreed that every visible, acoustically, uninterable property was acceptable, and now you're simply getting more power out of it. An acceptable answer to that would not be that we're already close to the theoretical maximum. That would be missing the point. So if any of you could answer that, I'd like...
Sure. Would someone else on the board like to... Jim?
I'd like to try it. We are anticipating this as an evolving technology and that there will be improvements. And what we're making our bylaw based on right now is what the existing conditions we have now. And as we move forward, we're anticipating that there would be changes, and we'd come back for revisions. And hopefully, we'll be looking at sound, setback, and every other thing we think is important, and adjust it for that. Right now, we don't think there is, but hopefully, there will be some really big changes and there'll be some really quiet turbines that don't make noise and bother anybody, don't have flicker, and maybe we can solve all those problems and we'll make an adjustment at that time.
No, that doesn't speak to my point.
Mr. Chair, I can speak to that point.
Just a moment, yeah.
I can speak to his point.
All right, go ahead.
Yes, sir. The reason is because we are not zoning for an industrial use. We are not zoning for an energy production use. We are zoning strictly for an accessory use. And when you think of that term, 51% is, you know, allowing 49% to be sold is the most we can do and still be credibly accessory. That's the reason. It's a zoning issue that we are dealing with, and we are not about to create a situation where people can come in and build private wind generating plants. That's not what this is about. And that would, at this stage of the technology, create a lot more problems than we have right now where we're to do that. So that's basically it. It's an accessory use, but therefore, by definition, the amount of energy produced in an accessory use cannot exceed the amount that's used on-site.
I hope that answers your question. And we're getting real close to debating, and I'd like to stay away from that. And I'm not, you know, I'm not adverse to your asking a question. Maybe we, in the future, we could answer that at one of our regular meetings where we are discussing issues such as that. But that's a very good question. Someone else? Yes, sir.
My name's George Hampson. I'm from Precinct Five. And the reason why I'm here tonight is to learn about this before we get to town meeting. And I know that's a long way from now, but I think it's a very important issue. One question I'd like to ask, you might not be able to answer it right now, is that for most of us people who are novice at this, for wind turbines in general, I would like to know where a 200-kilowatt turbine might be running in our general area, whether it might be in Cape Cod or off Cape, but something that town meeting members or people who are curious could go visit. I think it's a very important issue because most of us have no idea what the difference is between 200-kilowatt and a 100-kilowatt.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? So I think that's a very important issue because Mr. Ford spoke to this, and I was listening to him, and I thought maybe it'd be a good idea to find out what went into it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian, are you aware of any 200-kilowatt turbines in our geographical area?
Woods Hole Research is 100, so...
Woods Hole Research Center is 100?
It's a good comment. They want to add some comparative examples before we get to town meeting. We'll certainly have them.
Right. Just a moment, please. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Mary Zawosky, 53 Ransom Roads, Precinct One. And...
Would you spell your last name, please?
Y, Y at the end.
S.K.Y.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So ideally, of course, I'd like to see the turbines not continue until we can figure out what all the problems are with them because I live 900 feet from the Woods Hole Research Center turbine, which is 100-kilowatt. And because there's so much suffering in it, I feel like we're like the canaries in the coal mine here trying to figure out why are these things bothering us the way they are. And I know I myself would not be included in this public outreach area. And I think this public outreach area is not big enough because I would not have had an opportunity to learn about these things. I certainly never expected the problems that I'm experiencing. The other comment that I had is that there are many people at the CBI meeting tonight at Gus Canty, and they wondered if they could present any written comments to you.
Absolutely. We can receive written comments.
Okay, we'll pass that on. Thank you.
Yes. And I might add at this point that we've already received one written comment this evening, and it will be available in our office. It's from Attorney Bob Amundt. And he submitted it to the planning board, and the planning board has not had a chance to read it yet because it was just given to us tonight. But it is available and will be available in our office if you choose to read that. And it is available for the planning board also. Yes, sir.
I'm John Carlton Foss from 80 Church Street, and I see that Ron Zweig is here. His wind turbine is one of an example, or an example of what I think is a successful implementation. He is a neighbor of ours, and we are familiar with many other neighbors. There was one neighbor who, for a period of a few months, had concerns that she was hearing the turbine and was bothered by it. But, and my wife and I talked with her quite deeply about it, and at one point, she had me convinced that, in fact, she was hearing the turbine. So then she realized a few weeks later that she definitely did not hear the turbine. And she personally decided she wanted to have a turbine in her backyard, too. So I can make many other comments about Ron's turbine, but I want to encourage him to speak about it. I think it's important to pay attention to successful implementations, and I think this is one. It's idiosyncratic in relation to the draft that you put together because it's more than .51 of the power that he uses, he actually uses in his household. So that brings into, well, is it accessory use? Or maybe there would be a way for a person who had that size turbine, which is quite quiet, to apply under non-accessory use. I don't know how it will play out in terms of your standard and the practice of how difficult it will be to get that kind of turbine in place. I know of another turbine, which is, I think, on the order of three to five kilowatts, which is quite noisy. It was poorly installed. Fortunately for the owners, there aren't nearby neighbors, so as far as I know, there haven't been complaints. But it can be a little bit tricky in these matters, and I hope you will, to a certain extent, reason from the base of successful implementations, and that would, I believe, be the case in Ron Zweig's implementation.
All right, thank you. The next speaker. Yes, sir.
Evening, everyone. Dave Moriarty, Precinct Six. I just have a question for the board. We've already had many complaints about a 100-kilowatt turbine. Why did we increase it another 100 when there's so much debate about the 100-kilowatt that hasn't seemed to have been satisfied, the neighbors? Why do we go up to 200 when we haven't even straightened the 100 yet? Out.
Okay. So your question is, why was it increasing?
Yeah, what's the rationale?
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Chair, I can address that question.
I'm not going to address that just yet, Rich.
Well, you have a question, I can address it.
Basically, 200-kilowatt is too big, is what you're saying?
Well, I'm just wondering why the board went up to 200 when they can't even satisfy a 100. Why would you even go up to 200? Doesn't make any sense.
Yes, yes, sir.
Ron Zweig, Precinct One. Thanks very much for this opportunity to comment on the draft as far as you've taken it so far. And I also would like to endorse the work you've done. I know you've been going through a huge volume of documents, and it's been a lot of work to get to this point. One thing I'd just like to say about what John Carlton Foss said, our turbine actually doesn't generate more than your specifications. But we do generate more energy than we use, and we donate that to charities in town. So it's another way of sharing the benefit from the turbine. One thing I'm just unclear about, in looking at this and looking at the different levels that you've established, one is that it's unclear to me how you, which I think you can perhaps, to some extent, you've expressed an opinion this evening, but how these different levels were established and in terms of the kilowatt capacity of the turbines for smaller ones and larger ones. It seems to me that the, another way to look at this, and this may be part of the process you're going through, there are two dimensions to this that I'd suggest you may wish to explore. One is that I think it's more the specifications, the technical dimensions, that might be looked at. Sound is clearly one. There may be a sound limit. If we look at the old bylaw, some of these things are here. In terms of setting these, I mean, a 50-kilowatt machine or a 60 could be noisier than you may imagine. I mean, it may be for a household. I mean, what I'm trying, all I'm saying is that if there's a limit, as in the old bylaw, which was 40 decibels, which is far lower than what you're hearing from me now. It's about two-thirds what you're hearing from me now, level. But that is one thing. Another dimension is the setbacks, of course, and the height of the tower, which has to do with setbacks and those types of things. So I think that if you look at the technical aspects first and then say, okay, we only want so much sound emitted from a property at a certain level, at a property line, that would be the specification, and then the turbine would need to meet that. And that would be a way of looking at whatever the size is. Because, as you mentioned, technology will be changing, it'll be getting better, and that that would be more of an important factor to look at. Flicker is another factor, clearly, to look at in terms of how that might affect households in terms of the location. On the Met Tower requirement, you may wish to think about that a little bit for these smaller installations. That can be a very expensive part of it, and it takes a while. And yet, we do have pretty good data, particularly in Falmouth, over winds and this type of thing. So we have an idea across town from various sensors that are here. And again, I think I'd just like also to come to the, you know, the point that was raised and just to look at another way of viewing this, and that is in terms of the usage of the power on-site and to what extent. And we do use more than 51% on our site, so it's not of what we're generating. But I'm looking at it more from a finance standpoint. And if you look at the investment that's required to put up a wind turbine, and if the wind turbine meets all the technical specifications, then there might be a, you know, that's just one thing to explore. If you were to look at what it costs to set up a small turbine, 10-kilowatt, five, whatever it may be, and then you look at that in terms of the... it may be, and then you look at that in terms of the energy that would need to be produced to justify the investment. I mean, what you're saying about wind, then, I think would have to be translated to PV, to solar electric power, because it would be the same kind of thing, right? I mean, if someone generated 60 percent of, you know, that went to the grid, it would be, you couldn't put up that much PV. And then we'd be kind of curtailing renewable energy development in town because it would be beyond that capacity. And some businesses may also look at this as a way, if they're going to make an investment, to think of it as a, as a way of generating some revenue, maybe, you know, as a business side of things. But it has to meet the specifications, sound, flicker, all these other factors, setbacks, other safety aspects that go with it. So I think that if you look at that side of it, and then from that, you can kind of come back to setting scale or whatever, however it might go, if you can do it that way, or you just set the parameters that must be met to satisfy the town and that it isn't, that it's set up in this, in this same fashion. If there's a reason for these, it wasn't clear to me from reading this exactly how these were set. Okay, basically, there might be something more to it underlying here. But I would tend to look at it more from the technical, financial, and to be sure that everyone is, you know, and that there's also an important dimension that we, when we put our turbine up, was that we had neighborhood meetings before we even did anything. We started with the neighbors and started talking with them first. And there can be, that dimension can be added as a consultation process that brings people in, they can raise their concerns, they can look at it, they can discuss things, and this would be part of a, of an approval process. So it isn't something, if your board is the permitting entity or whichever board in town is, that it would be, community would be behind it. So those are my main comments. It seems I want to look at it from a little different viewpoint than starting with these different levels. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Do you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah. We have a question for you, Mr. Zweig.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Would you, would you? Clarification question.
Sorry, okay, sorry.
Did you say the size of your turbine is 100 kilowatts?
No, no, 10.
It's 10 kilowatts?
10 kilowatts.
Do you see seasonal variation in your turbine?
In terms of the production? Oh, yeah. It's a, the summer is great for solar, the winter is great for wind. So that's the way it works. And if you look at it, it's sort of a bell curve, you know, starting from August, it's relatively low, July, August, and then it starts peaking toward December, January, you know, when we have the strong northwest winds coming through, and then it comes right back down again. So we have a very quiet, relatively quiet in terms of energy production summer season. So it's not, it's, and that's basically, it looks like almost a perfect bell curve, if you can imagine.
You said you use more than 51 percent on site.
Yes.
Does that vary over the season also?
Well, it's 51, when we talk, I assume you mean per year, on a yearly basis?
Yearly basis.
On a yearly basis. On a monthly basis, it's going to vary because the wind is different. So in the summer, we actually may be buying power, and in the winter, we're donating power. So it works that way. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Would it be all right if we approached you to visit your turbine?
Yeah, of course. Sure. Yeah, definitely. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Levi Adams, and I'm from Precinct Three. At first, I have a question regarding whether or not the charge to the planning board that you're restricted with regards to defining the bylaw on the basis of accessory use, or did you add that yourself? Did something come down from wherever? It says accessory use is the context in which you need to build these bylaws, or you built the bylaws? Because I believe that the framing of this bylaw is really kind of, there are a lot of good things in it, but it's really negative. I believe it's negative with regards to where we are, where the town thought it was when it started doing wind turbines. I believe that it connotes a kind of negative view. And if it's framed, if everything has to be on the basis of accessory use, then you're already starting a little bit behind, in my view. It's a hostile environment, I would say, that that creates a hostile environment because it limits everyone in many ways. And I appreciate that there are very many turbines of various size, but we are in a, I think the town committed itself some time ago, now maybe that's going to change, to being a wind-friendly place. And that's the question from a policy standpoint, are we going to be a wind-friendly town, or are we not going to be a wind-friendly town? If we are, then it seems to me that we need to, I'd be very cautious about starting any bylaw with the prohibitions. It seems to me that's not friendly, to start the bylaw with the prohibitions. You can rewrite that in a very different kind of way. I have some general concerns that we want to make sure that the kinds of places, that they're, that we are friendly in a number of ways. I don't know, for instance, if this provision here for what's called public use of light industrial zoning district, what, I'm not sure that the Falmouth Hospital would be either of those. Public, I suppose it's public use, but not by the public entity, not a governmental entity. One would be concerned at some point that these kinds of entities, whether we're talking about the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institutions, and there are many there, or the Falmouth Hospital, or Falmouth Academy, would look at its energy needs somewhere down the line and see a need. And we want to be sure that these bylaws fit those kinds of institutions. If you're persuaded that it does, good, I'm all in favor of that. But I, as I read the bylaw, I had some concern about those kinds of things. I also think when we're trying to promote from a statewide energy, the development of energy business, we don't want to be onlookers in the town of Falmouth when the energy-related business start to develop. I don't know how many turbines they would need, but I think that you're creating an environment that says we are energy-friendly or not, alternative energy, and we need to be mindful of that because the state is making a very significant investment in bringing alternative energy development businesses into the state and helping them to develop. I don't know if we want to be onlookers. We don't want, as a citizen here, to be unduly distracted, but at the same time, we need, as you are doing, to set the standards which we can live with. I'm pro-wind, as you probably detect, because I think that in the future, our town and its investments and the kind of things, energy needs that we have are going to be so great that we need to be able to take advantage of all kinds of energy resources. Another concern is whether or not the zoning of other kinds of places. I could envision building, having been participated, as you know, Ralph, in building a complex of houses, affordable housing, we did in the town of Chatham a couple of years ago, that one could build a turbine that served the 14 units in that, they're separate houses for that. How does that fit with this? As I read this, I said, well, if I did that in Falmouth, if I found some great plot of land and built 14 houses for affordable housing use, could I build a wind turbine to provide the energy for those 14 units? I don't know. But I think that it's something for you to think about, that along with things like the, one could imagine a condo association wanting a single turbine for the whole condo association. And I don't know whether these bylaws address those kinds of questions. I would hope that, my comment is try to make the bylaw friendly and be very mindful of the language and not be so negative at the very beginning of what the prohibitions are on top. Regulations tend to be like that, you know? We tell people what they can't do before we tell them what they can do. And I'm very concerned that this hard-working planning board has, falls into the trap of being negative like other organizations that we have, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? Yes, sir.
Sorry, Ron Zweig, again, Precinct One. I'd like to follow on those comments. Basically, under the Green Communities Act, 10 houses could get together and put a turbine somewhere, basically. It doesn't have to be even right in the neighborhood, it could be someplace else in the vicinity that would then be their investment. 10 or more houses, basically, could be done, and that would support that comment. And also, I'm also the town representative on the Cape Light Compact. And the, and all of you who haven't taken advantage of the Cape Light Compact's audit process and the other energy conserving dimensions to its energy efficiency program, I suggest you do. The funds are available to do that, and they, we are actually all paying for it through our electric bills, so it's something to do. And in that, then, it comes to the point of saying, well, if someone sets up a house and they're using 51 percent of the power, the way the house is set up and it's operating, and then suddenly we bring in a program like Cape Light Compact, and they end up reducing that need, that usage, suddenly they're now producing 60 percent more power than they're using. So it's a disincentive to energy conservation to a household if they have to stay within that 51 percent dimension. So that's something else to factor in because things are going to be changing. Appliances change, things change, it's getting better all the time. So this is another, this is, it gets complicated, but when you start setting these kinds of things, it's not that easy to factor in the future and to look at existing programs. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Additional comments from the public? Yes, sir?
This is, this is a continuing debate. I was inspired by something that Ron said, Steve Layton again, Precinct One. I think you want to pay attention to the incentives that you're setting, and I don't see any incentive here for efficiency. And in fact, on a somewhat whimsical note, you recall the old trick of putting a playing card in your bicycle spokes. That is well under one lot, and it makes a lot of noise. You could imagine someone who wanted to thumb their nose at these regulations, putting up one of the very smallest turbines and making it very noisy.
Okay, thank you. Additional comments from the public? Hearing none. I think I will close the, I will close the hearing, and, well, Ralph.
We take under advisement for written comments.
Should we try to answer that previous question?
I'm sorry?
Did we want to try to answer that previous question about the?
Distance centers?
No, the 200, why we increased the size.
Oh, would you like to address that? No?
Well, I just, I think I threw that out there just because we want to keep all options open. I don't want to be too prohibitive or restrictive. We don't know if there's a place where we can fit a 200 watt, but we'd like to give it a try. If there is, we don't want to just rule it out arbitrarily.
Yeah, Rich?
Just to add to that, we are going to be developing performance standards, and that's how we will address those issues, is when we apply it in the permitting process, applying the performance standards. So why tie our hands to any smaller than we need to?
Yeah.
That's the logic.
Sorry.
Are you putting any deadline on the comments, written comments?
We use, no. No, no, we won't put a deadline on the comments. So if you'd have additional comments you'd like to submit in writing, or you know people who would like to, you can do that, do so, and have them sent to the planning office.
Are you going to include the written comments we have received in this hearing before we close it?
I can't, I can't read them all. I've, I noticed, I noticed that we did have one. Yeah, I know, it's, it's, this is not many, this is just one, this is just one written comment. There's a lot of information and attachments and so forth to that. So that's, that's just by itself. Any other comments from the board? Yes, Paul?
Just an unrelated comment. I attended the wind turbine advisory group before coming here this evening, and the affected neighbors were participating at the table, and I thought that was very good news.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
For the board's knowledge and public knowledge, we do receive another, the email that we have to do from a notice for the Energy LLC with the other commenters.
Okay. All right. Rich?
Not tonight, but I would suggest the next meeting, when we do have a discussion, we be ready to discuss some of the comments that we've heard tonight.
That's, I believe that's our intent, and that will be next week?
I think the public should know that, that, yeah.
That's the plan.
Yeah, that will be next week.
We file these comments, and then we'll bring it to the board, and we'll have an expanded bylaw for the public, also, like that.
Right.
Answer some of the questions I can.
Right, for everyone's know, I will be absent from that meeting, and Pat will be conducting that meeting. Jim?
Just in general, one of the, our charge is really not to be negative and to stop things, but to protect neighbors. Our job is to make sure that new developments in town and things that change really protect the existing neighbors. So we're not really going out and trying to, don't do this or don't do that. We're trying to protect what's there right now and the rights of the property owners and the noise that comes from them. And that's really the place we're coming from, not to stop something, but to protect.
With balance, Jim. With balance.
With balance, right.
Any other comments from the board? In that case, then I will close the hearing, and we thank you for coming, ladies and gentlemen, and your comments. The next item on the agenda is, of course, correspondence. I see none in front of me, Brian. There's no correspondence. Then before, before, before we close the meeting, then I would like everyone to be advised that next, that next Tuesday, we will be discussing this input and other, other things that are relevant to the bylaw. And Brian, are there any other items on next week's agenda that we need to mention at this time?
I'm maybe others things, but we'll try to make sure that this is the main topic.
Focal point, okay.
We want an expanded bylaw that gets into some performance standards.
Okay. Lastly, before we adjourn, I'd like everyone to know that I visited Joyce in the hospital the other day, and she seemed to be doing very well, but she was on her way to Brigham and Women's Hospital in Boston for a possible procedure. Brian, do you have anything, update on that?
I have no updates.
Okay. So just keep her in your thoughts, and we'll look forward to having her back as soon as we can. In the meantime, Brian and Marlene are up there on their own, sharing, sharing, sharing the duties, and so when you stop in, you don't have to say hi to Joyce right now, you can just walk in and announce yourself. Anything else that anybody wants to bring up for a future meeting? If not, then I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So, man.
Second? Halls in favor? Aye. Opposed? Aye. Opposed.